Okay. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Good evening. Tonight is January 11th. This is the Manistee City Council Study Session. Study Session Items. Public comments on Study Session Related Items. See any public? We'll go right into Discussion on Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Committee Bylaws. Police Chief Josh Glass.
Just to give some background to council, how we got to this point. In September of 2020, I was given direction to start meeting with the Blight Ad-Hoc Committee again. That ad hoc committee had previously met for a year or so, come to council with recommendations. I was given direction to meet with them again. We met from September of 20 till last summer. The Blight Ad-Hoc Committee came up with six recommendations to council. We presented those to council. I believe it was one through five, and then the sixth recommendation was to come up with a resolution for one through five. It sounded like council was agreeable to that, but they tasked staff with coming up with bylaws or revising the mission statement of a standing blight committee. So staff went back and worked on bylaws for a blight committee or neighborhood restoration and beautification committee. We've crafted those bylaws and bringing them back to council for further discussion.
council members, do you have any comments?
I appreciate what you did, and I think that they met the question that we had asked of you before, and it took out something the accident issue that were there and replaced them with recommendations. So I'm comfortable with what you put together and happy to have it done.
I just have a few comments. I don't understand why this isn't a commission. Why is it a committee and not a commission? It reads, it seems like it should be more of a commission.
If I'm being honest, Your Honor, I don't know the difference between the two, to be honest.
I did send an email to George Siller, but he's probably out of town.
I'll follow up with him. I think that's a good point. If it's standing and not ad hoc, maybe it should be a commission.
That's really my thought, too. When you look at the definitions between the two, it just reads more like a commission. So that was one thing. It doesn't say anywhere in here what proposed time, I don't think, you're gonna meet.
I think, in my mind, that would be hashed out. Once we elect officers, hash out a meeting time, and we will work with the clerk to post those.
Okay.
That's how it would work in my mind. I mean, does council have any different idea or the city manager?
Discussions I've had with Chief Glass, I think monthly, maybe, leading up to the spring, and kind of had some ideas about running, you know, if we're gonna do a notice about some blight sweeps or neighborhood cleanup, just kind of letting people know what to expect. We'd like to run that through the committee. And then we talked about kind of having, when they do have, you know, the top blighted properties in each area, just kind of going through that prescription for each one with the city attorney, the chief, and then seeing what other resources, you know, if it's maybe a nonprofit can help someone if they're having an issue with maintenance. So I think that was kind of the initial idea. I'm still working through that with Chief Glass, but we're hoping this is a good productive group, and we're looking forward to working with them.
I think it's, you guys did a great job on it. I just have one more thing. When we talk about the membership, we've talked about five people. You've got at least one member, she'll be a representative from a local active service club organizations, example, J.C.'s Lions Club Habitat. I was thinking it would be really helpful. I, in my mind, if we had somebody on the banking side or the lending side as a member. I don't know. I'm hoping to, you know, if you don't want to put that in there, I'm hoping you attract one, because I think that could be a useful resource as far as figuring out a financial plan and coming up with ideas. So that was, that was about it, really. I don't know if anybody else has input. Aaron?
It looks good.
Well, that was short.
Well, just a minute. I just thought, you know, from the time when I started bringing it up about blight, I mean, we needed something to bring so that we can clean up the city. But, I mean, I didn't expect all this, but that's a good job. Is there any reason why we have to have a business person? I mean, we asked for people when we started out, just the persons of each district. And why couldn't we keep that, so these people stay interested in their own? I knew you had troubles getting a few people from the district.
Yeah. Participation certainly was a challenge that we faced. I think, and again, I'm not gonna take credit for creating these bylaws. That was one piece of it. Many were involved, Ed Bradford and the city manager. I think the thought process there is bringing people from different groups for the problem solving process. So as the mayor just mentioned, someone from the financial world, you have someone from law enforcement on there. Just having different people from different backgrounds or experience would help the problem solving piece of that, or have different ideas, so.
Are we gonna get better response time, Josh? But, I mean, people know what I keep yelling about all the time. And I've gotten a letter from the manager and George. I don't care. I think if somebody has to keep this going. We've got a trailer on Ford Street that's sitting there. That thing should have been hauled out of there a long time ago. It's broken down and needs welding, according to the guy. I mean, there's a car up on Oak that's sitting there for months with car tarps over it because it must have a broken window. You know, we bring these things to the, to get it straightened out, and they're still sitting there months later.
I can speak, I don't know what the car on Oak Street, but I can speak to the Ford Street. That's, the court has ordered, the judge has ordered, made an order for that to be cleaned up or A, B, and C, or the city can clean it up. So when a judge makes a ruling, we're kind of bound by that ruling.
Right, but the thing is, I mean, he gave until the twenty second or something like that.
I don't disagree with you.
I think that George needs to talk to the judge, and they come on with me for a ride. Because, I mean, we're sitting with the same junk for months.
In some cases, for years. Depending on what road you're on. I get it.
That's why I keep coming back here and yelling, because we gotta clean this mess up. It's ridiculous. You know, when you got houses sitting there that need to be cleaned up. I get tired of looking at that. I used to write tickets on it, and then I'd haul it away. I didn't wait for the judge to sit down and.
Well, eventually tickets lead back to a judge's ruling if the person doesn't clean it up or they wanna fight it. So we're finding that a lot of these are going to the court, and the judge is making a ruling. We're bound by the ruling, so. As a police chief, whether I agree or disagree with the judge, we're bound by that, so.
We still have the officers that have the same districts, like, we didn't change that, did we?
We, I don't know if we changed, we just had shift selection. So what we do every spring, so February, March, we send that out on social media and paper, each officer and what district they're assigned to. So they have to look at our recent shift bids to see if anything's changed. So if they have changed, we'll, should be that as we begin our efforts, really ramp up in the spring. But as of right now, it's the same, it'd be the same contact.
I feel like we kind of slipped a little bit on the blight. Like, we haven't got the reports, like, in the last couple of months? Like, our blight reports?
I have blight reports for every month I can.
Oh.
You want me to send them to you personally, I can?
Well, I just, I haven't seen any, so I just thought that we were kind of just.
Nope. I get a report every month from our sergeant. In fact, I have our annual blight reports done that will be included in my annual report. If you'd like to see it before March, I can certainly send them off.
I just want to make sure we were still doing it.
Oh, we're definitely in for blight.
Okay. You know how I feel about it, so, okay. Well, Mr. Gamble, where do we go from here?
So I think any other feedback? Well, I think George had a couple of comments, but I think it would come back for adoption at a close council meeting very soon, probably February. And then there'd be appointments. We have to advertise for committee members.
I know that there was a motion before council that failed. Do you want us to bring back all the recommendations? And this is included in recommendation number one for the council?
I think the only recommendation was to just reword that one wording, right?
The ad hoc committee recommended six things. Two of them we already do. One was a standing blight committee. There were a couple of points in there. And I can read them to refresh memory, or we can bring it back to council to be voted on?
Chief, I put them up on the screen, I think. Is this what?
That's the resolution. And so that was point number six. They want a resolution following. So one is a standing blight committee. Two is develop a new blight ordinance. As you recall, we already did that. Three, we have prioritized blight downtown. We have our patrol sergeant assigned just to downtown. Number four would be committed to addressing public-owned infrastructure buildings or property that over the years has deteriorated or been damaged. Five, continue to budget funds, which council has. And then six would be starting to have a conversation between the city and the county regarding foreclosed properties. And that's an example of a resolution that the ad hoc committee submitted, just for an example.
I thought the most productive thing would be the bylaws of this, getting this committee set up. And one thing we talked about next was Ed Bradford was talking about this community service day that used to happen. And so kind of that was a big thought of having someone with a service group in here and then maintaining a list of volunteers, so some productive community involvement could take place as opposed, in addition to the enforcement. But we kind of have that resource to combat blight as well. But I think this is a good first step. And I don't know, any of the other five items need some movement, Chief?
Well, they represent the recommendations from the ad hoc. So I think the motion we brought before was if the council was willing to adopt the recommendations from the ad hoc committee. And that's when you gave us direction to go back and revise number one. In my mind, it would seem that we bring that motion back for discussion to be voted on by council. That's how I see it.
My only suggestion is that since we're establishing an actual committee or a commission, that we allow that new commission to at least review what had been suggested before. And, you know, again, not, not start off with somebody else's work. Since it's gonna be a brand-new commission, that would be their first, after they organize, is review those recommendations and make their own kind of weighted decisions. That would, that would be my suggestion.
I think that's a great point, if it's gonna be a standing committee.
Josh, did you ask any of these service clubs anything about it yet, or not at all?
I don't know, we're not to that point yet, so.
I'd love to see if they were even interested.
I'd like to think that we have people in our community who'd be interested, but.
Yeah, you know, the group that came to mind would be the J.C.'s. I think they would be an ideal fit for this. They're, they're active, they're a younger group, and a lot of the kind of initiatives, I think, as far as the, the big day of service are things that they're familiar with and supported in the past. That was my thought, when I saw that on there.
Who's actually on the committee right now, or who are you working with?
The ad hoc committee doesn't exist anymore. They fulfill their obligation.
Oh, okay.
Which, like, who was on it? I can remember, we had a group, the people who regularly attended, Mitch Dice was on there late, but he was a consistent member. Catherine Grabowski, Kelly Greavy, and.
Dennis Otto.
Dennis Otto was on there. Mary Russell was on there. And I don't think I'm missing anybody that was a core nucleus, meaning attendance-wise.
I think Horco was on too, but he didn't come to a lot of them.
He didn't come to a lot, no. And there were members that wanted to be on it but didn't, didn't participate. So that, those people were the nucleus of the decision-making and the recommendation to bring them.
So it's just you?
What's that?
It's just you?
I'm just a liaison.
So what we're waiting on is for?
And we have a council member as well in there, in here as well. So then we'd need three additional, a service member and then two others. Service group member, I should say. And we just put out for, calling for committee members for other committees, so we could have this as one of them as well, see who's interested. And if anyone knows anyone, yeah, please encourage them to apply, if you think they'd be a good fit.
We're gonna advertise it as a commission.
That's my understanding. I need to talk to George about it, but, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so we're gonna wait for George and see what he says, and then.
Then we'll move forward and bring it before for formal adoption. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Discussion on Inspection Services, city manager, Bill Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. So the last couple of weeks, we did have quite a few complaints to my office as well, to council members. I think council member Sullivan and council member Grabowski, probably others. There was an uptick in building without permit enforcement, and I believe that should have been, they should have made me aware of that, that that was their plan. And so I did talk to, I met with Glenn and with Kurt about, about that, and I needed more communication from them upfront, if that was, how that was gonna happen. And we discussed to, as opposed to kind of going up and confronting and leaving a card on the door, doing more of a, having a letter sent with the code that's being violated, so that people can see what's going on. I think it, I think that would kind of help with some of these, but also, I think, in general, I was disappointed with the lack of communication there. I did discuss it with them. And I did talk with council member Sullivan about kind of her concerns with some of the rental certifications that have been done, and a plumbing inspection where they didn't notice the smell, but I did talk to them about that. They said, you know, if there's something that was missed during the initial inspection, they can come back. And sometimes there is a smell after a certain thing with plumbing is done, that the traps don't have water in them. So I feel like when I do talk with Safe Build and Glenn, I do feel like if they're in general responsive, and obviously I haven't been here very long, but I think they've been for two years. One year was COVID. Their contract started in 2019. So I just, I wanna, I think, maybe start getting more complaints when they come to council or myself, see them in writing. I was kind of bombarded with phone calls, but then actual, a lot of addresses and. You know, I'd like to see these written down about what specifically the complaint is. So I would ask, you know, if council gets those calls, please refer them to my office, ask them to send me an email, and then I can look into the issue. But that was kind of something I wanted to just kind of talk about, and I think just kind of open it up for feedback. I know we can't have a closed session on it, it is a current contract, and I just wanna keep that in mind. But just in general, feedback would be helpful with regards to, I know you've been getting complaints, so I just wanna hear what your thoughts are. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So the permits aside, like, I pulled up my notes from, like, February of 2020 when we went over this, and I, I had some questions about, like, the blight in, like, their checklist that they gave us, because it kind of goes hand-in-hand with some of our blight issues. Like, a lot of this stuff checks the box for blight. And, you know, it helps with some of the blight issues. It takes it off their plate. And I, I even wrote down that one of the requirements, they need to have insurance, because if the house burns down, we don't wanna be responsible for having to tear down the house if they don't have insurance. It was never brought up again. I brought it up again in July of 2020, when we were negotiating with them. And they're like, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that. It was never brought up again. Then I went through, I was, I was looking at, you know, the paper that they handed us in November with, you know, how many rental inspections they did. And I'm pretty much the only one that, that knows, like, looking at these addresses, the conditions of the houses, because that's what I do for a living. I've been in a lot of these houses. This year was basically, their inspections were condos and apartment units. So that was a quick, you know, Brook Harbor, Lake Shore Drive, Arthur, Spruce. I mean, a lot of these are basically condos, Spinnaker, all of that. So they did, they completed 204 as of November. They still have 122 left to do in 2021. So I don't know how many they finished, if they finished any at all. They have 351 to do in 2022. So if they didn't finish any of the other ones, because they're working on permits, that leaves them with 473 rental inspections they have to do in 2022. And this is a 23-page packet that they have to do for rental inspections. Now, mind you, they do it every three years, and they already took care of the condos. So that means they gotta do a 23-page packet for the houses that are, like, way beyond blighted. The houses that I go into all of the time. There's no way, there is no way that they are going to be able to fulfill that contract. So they can say whatever they want, and I'm trying to be nice about it, but when they come in front of us and they're like, yeah, you know, let us know your concerns, email us your concerns, call us whenever you want, and I email them, and I email them, and then they completely ignore my emails, that pisses me off. They're just telling us whatever we wanna hear. They have no vested interest in this community whatsoever. And I feel bad for Matt, because he was brought in on the tail end of this, and now he's taking the brunt of it. We need to figure out who can fulfill this contract. Somebody needs to be in City Hall that can answer the complaints about the, about the permits and, you know, what's going on, and explain to these people why they have to have a permit, you know? They're not coming up and slapping, you know, stop work notices on the, on the doors and whatnot, and, you know? The stink drain in the plumbing was my house. Like, I get it, you know, that can happen for a few days, but a whole month, and you didn't even bother to say anything. You just slapped a sticker on the drain and walked away, and I had to deal with it. It's ridiculous. I, if, and if I hear COVID as an excuse one more time, I'm literally gonna lose my mind. Like, and they're playing on the fact that you're new, and, yeah, this, it's, it's not working for me. So we need to find somebody else that can do the contract, because it's not, that's how I feel about it. They're not gonna get through 473 houses in one year, when they couldn't even do the condos and the easy ones. That's, it's a fact.
It does seem like somebody needs to be here, because not everybody is going to feel comfortable doing, filling out an application online, even though that is a good step in the right direction. I think that there's gotta be some office time that they have to devote.
And they were doing office hours, I can see what they can, why do we haven't been having those? I'll talk to them about that.
They tell us that they were gonna have office hours here on a regular basis?
It was Thursdays, yeah, I'm gonna follow up with them. I didn't see them the last two weeks, but.
Every time they come here, they tell us what.
And for the money that we're paying, you can't expect to get it done.
Exactly. And every time they come here.
We either got a double amount of money putting in to hire two companies, because what we're paying is an unrealistic expectation to get that work done. We can have it on paper, we can say what we want. For over-investing in that project, the properties that we have, it's just not realistic to expect that job's gonna get done. And they complain because we got a deal on a contract, but not get it done doesn't make a lot of sense. We need someone to do the work. We need permits, we need blight taken care of. We can't expect to do it for $10 on the dollar.
And they need to be here.
I mean, when I talked to them that Monday on Fairview, and they were just putting it on a guy's window with some kind of tape, and then that windstorm and the rainstorm, it just blew off. And then they got into a big argument out there, so I had to settle that. So, and then I referred them to Bill's office. He said, well, I drive around, and if I see a house that needs work, we're working on, then I stop on the way back to City Hall. I said, well, you gotta do more than that. That's, I mean, just following when you see a house once in a while. And of course, the guy pointed out all the houses on Fairview, Second. I mean, he was pointing all these houses out while we're standing there. There were a lot that didn't have permits.
And I think that's part of the problem. There's, there's really two, well, there's three separate issues. There's the issue of inspecting our rental properties and the challenges that we have there. The second piece is being consistent with the county. Part of the problem, why we get so many complaints and people get so upset, is that Philer has a different reading than Mason County, than Manistee County, and the city of Manistee. We're not on the same page. And they go and say, look, I own properties in four other areas, and you're the only one that's making me get a permit to put windows in my house or siding on my house and all the other places around us. I, I think we need to, you know, again, our communities are too small for us to be the outlier. And again, I understand, they say, well, that's their interpretation of the regulation, but you have other smart people who are making a different interpretation. We need to somehow get together and collaborate. So if we're going to have requirements, it should be throughout the county and not just in the city. And then the third thing is when, when people are given the ticket and clearly have avoided a requirement, we, we basically say, oh, well, then on the, on Safe Build, you know, we'll see what we can do. Well, no, if you're, you know, again, if you're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong. You know, and I get it with some of them, because they're vague, but if you started building on your house and you didn't get a permit, then you should be, you know, subject to whatever the penalties are. And just because they weren't polite about it, well, you know, again, I can't attest for or against it, but if you were wrong and you did something, and in most cases, it wasn't out of ignorance. I mean, especially, you know, if you're renovating your home.
And I think there is a, I think kind of educating people on the value of pulling a, making sure their contractor pulls permits. That way they're, you know, they're holding, they can hold their contractor accountable, and it protects the homeowner, too. I think that's, you know, maybe more public, and I talked to Safe Build about that, kind of making sure people understand the value in this, and that it does help our housing stack be up to code. I mean, ultimately, that's what we need. We need, we need houses that are up to the current Michigan building code, and I think that is important for the community, so.
Mick, let me ask you a question. When you talk about these other areas that are having inspections done, and their, their requirements are different than ours, are they using Safe Build? Because I thought Philer was using Safe Build.
If they did, they just started.
I'm just wondering if they're all, if their guidelines match ours. So, and if, if they're using a different company, it would be prudent for us to try to find some of those companies and do a comparison at this point. And also look at, to Mr. Backman's point about the money, to look at what kind of rates they're charging.
You know, we are also, we are all sympathetic when the people complain they had to get a permit for a window or a permit for a roof. We all thought that was kind of absurd, yet we didn't do anything about it, or maybe it's in the code. Maybe some of these top five that we think are silly, maybe it should be a permit but no fee for the permit. I don't know what the, what the answer is, but everybody in this room thought, putting a roof on your house, you shouldn't have to have a permit. When you talk about roofing, I thought, that's how we all felt about it, or a window, or putting a door in. But, like, I had an oak wood door in my house. I don't know if they pulled a per, I don't think they pulled a permit, but Lowe's came and did it. I don't know if they even thought about a permit. I think that's past the statute of limitations, Josh, just for the record. I thought it was a confession. But anyway, maybe there's things that, that can be a permit just to keep it within the code, but there's no fee for that particular permit. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but, and I doubt that someone we hired to work for us is gonna wanna do that for free, but, but we all know there's some common ground here. But we all know there's some common ground here. We all think that there's some silliness going on with this building permits, though. But we gotta have common sense and I think some days that that just goes out of the window.
And I did speak with Dennis over at Manistee Township and it does sound like they have kind of different things that don't require permits that we require permits for, but ultimately, we need to be following the, the Michigan Building Code that they adopted, so, the state adopted.
What building code do they use?
I think it's 2015.
It is different than the building code. We've adopted the Uniform Building Code. Have they adopted the same code, they don't enforce it the same? Is that what's happening?
It's their interpretation of repair and maintenance versus new. That's the difference.
That's the difference?
And it's, and it's their interpretation, I'm sorry, I.
So we could clarify that interpretation then?
According to them, you can't. I, I've tried, I.
Yeah, and I've talked to them, you know, about, a letter to them about which items and they've kind of stated that, you know, then they put the liability on us if something happens because we exempted certain things. So that's kind of, that's kind of the trick bag about stating certain things don't need permits and them wanting us to put that in writing, so.
But again, I think the argument for repair, replacing a window is a repair.
Absolutely.
Especially if you're not changing the frame of, of the structure. I, I could see it if I was taking my window out and I was gonna put it in a wall. But if I'm just putting in a more energy-efficient window in my home, I shouldn't be pinned down to.
But their argument was that if you don't put it in properly, then you can cause damage to the house. But then you can also argue they're not even inspecting that because with my house, they didn't even check the pipe, they just slapped a sticker on it. So there you go, we're paying for a service that we're not even actually getting because they're not doing anything, they're slapping stickers everywhere. That's my problem, is we're paying for this and we're not getting anything. That's what I have a huge problem with, is once again, there is no vested interest in this community. We didn't have this, aside from the permits, we didn't have this issue with the rental inspections when Spicer had this program, when they were issuing the certificates. It wasn't a mess like this. There is no possible way that this company is gonna get through almost 500 rentals next, this coming year. It's, it's not gonna happen. And then 299 in 2023. And then all these houses are gonna be, and the sad thing is, is a lot of these renters that are in these houses are relying on us, wanting these people to come in and saying, hey, you know, this, this, and this, because they have this checklist saying, hey, you know, this stuff is finally gonna get fixed because they're not gonna come forward and say, hey, my landlord needs to fix this because they need a place to live. They're wanting somebody to come in and, hey, go through this checklist. So we're doing a huge disservice to them too, letting this slide year after year, hoping that they're gonna come in and give us the same spiel they keep giving us with, yeah, we'll do it, if you got a problem, you know, call us. Well, they don't answer the phone.
When is the contract up?
I read news, I think it's, uh, May, so there's like a 90-day out and then there's a 30 days before the renewal. I think it's May 16th that you can.
Yep.
Get out of it. And it's, yeah, it's, like, so the way this one was structured too, we received 20% of the permit fees. And my understanding, it was more lax when we had the state of Michigan here performing the inspections. But I know since then, you've had Spicer and I think another person, I think the gentleman was from Spicer. So we, I think there is some, we can look for some, uh, some other entities to bring before council. I mean, that's, just wanted to get some feedback. I, obviously, I'm newer here, so I didn't know all the history. I've been kind of relying on some of the other staff to let me know as well.
Well, what, I'm sorry, this is stuff that you guys probably already know, but what happened that we no longer have Spicer doing it? Does anyone know? I'm just curious.
Well, so we, we brought, we started doing that in 2015 or 16. We did three years, which is a full cycle. And we were pretty, we had 95 to 98% of them inspected and most of them, you know, we were inspecting for safety is the main thing. So the, the blight thing was always a tricky thing, we always had to deal with that. But, um, so we got through that and then in 19, uh, we started on our, basically the second go-around. And we have, we had hired Mark, who was formerly a city employee, to do the inspections. He was doing them before and then he came on board because he's had experience with it. But in, in 19, Brad approached us and said, we have an opportunity with SafeBuild. We were, honestly, this isn't our belly wag, that isn't our main thing. So we were, we kind of did it as a favor, honestly, for the city, the first go-around. And that's how we got into it, um, and we kind of structured some things technically, so it worked better. But, um, so then he, he talked to us about it in 19 and we decided to talk to SafeBuild, how we could transition files and everything. And we were going down that road, and then not to use COVID as an excuse, but COVID came. And, um, uh, in the middle of that, we were starting, we were actually starting our 2020s, I guess, just getting ready to start them off, or just ready to hand them off to them. And at that point, the COVID hit and we said, well, this, this is a good clean break. Why don't you take 2020 and, and finish them? So we actually finished the 19 cycles. It's kind of just a mutual thing with the city that we just transitioned. So I don't know, there wasn't anything particular that drove it other than, we were kind of looking to get out, to be real frank, and, um, and the opportunity came, so.
Thanks. So did you say the state of Michigan did the permits before? Is that what you said?
Yes.
That's my understanding, yes.
So couldn't we go back to that and have, find somebody else just to do the rental inspections? Wouldn't that be easier? Because this is a mess, like, this is such a nightmare.
Um, my perspective, and I'm talking for Molly now, she would be adamantly opposed to going back to the state of Michigan. Because they do not give us any information on building permits, you have to FOIA it. And even when you FOIA it, you don't get the information that she needs to properly maintain the assessment role. I can tell you, on the building inspection side, Molly is thrilled with SafeBuild. She gets every scrap of information she needs. It's a very detailed packet, it goes to all of the department heads so they can look at stuff. You know, I, I think the rental program and the building inspection program are two different things. There are issues with the, the building inspection program in terms of consistency. But I can tell you, it's not just in Manistee, because when I was the interim manager, I spoke with Luddington. And I, I may get this wrong, but I, my recollection was, the same gentleman does inspections for the city of Luddington and for, um, uh, the county. And they do them differently. And just recently, Pyramid Head Township, which was not doing inspections for windows and some of the roof replacements, I think passed an ordinance to do that. So even in Mason County, it's not consistent. So there's inconsistency all across the state because, I mean, there's some communities that, right on their website, say, we don't require permits for roof replacements and windows. So I think there is room for interpretation there, depending on who's looking at it. But going back to the state for building inspections, yes, you could do it, but I think it would be a real detriment to properly maintaining assessment.
But we can split that to where it's not the same company doing permits and.
Absolutely, yep. I just wanted to give Molly's perspective because she's thrilled to be getting that information now where she couldn't get it before.
Okay. So maybe we can find somebody to do the two separate, so it's not a mess like it is right now?
Okay, and so your main concern, my understanding was that rental inspections were picking up. But I guess, I know there's still concern, can they do all of these items? Um, we can look at other companies, that would be a matter of kind of going out and I'm not sure what's available, we'd have to take a look at it. And I'd want to take a good look before I bring a recommendation back.
You could, if, if you have time, I almost, I almost hate to ask you this because I always, you always. But if you had a conversation with the two township, send, join us. See who's doing theirs and see, see if you can get some information.
Yes, I can do that. Well, I appreciate the feedback, thank you very much.
All right. Discussion on American Rescue Plan Act Guidelines. Finance Director Ed Bradford and City Manager Bill.
So it was good timing, we finally received the interim rule, the final interim, the final rule, I should say. We had the interim rule and this, the final rule was, um, sent out on January 6th. So that was kind of very timely to have this discussion, and we've been waiting a while for it, so.
So, um, I just wanted to bring council up to date. Bill asked to provide a little update now that the new guidance is out. And they, he did send some information out on his last weekly update. The actual final rule is 450-some pages. There's a nice 40-page summary and then there's some even more summarized summaries. But there's one really big takeaway, which is super helpful for practically every community in Michigan. And that's what I want to leave you with as we go through this. So just a quick review, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act. It established the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, which provided about $130 billion for communities across the country. Michigan got about $3.4 billion of that. Our portion of that is about $640,000 and it'll be issued in two payments. We've received the first one and we should get another one next September. So the first payment was about $320,000 and it's sitting in a bank account we haven't spent any. The guidance for how that money could be spent was issued in the interim rule, which was May 17th, 2021, and it basically outlined four broad categories. Responding to the public health emergency, providing premium pay, providing government services to the extent of revenue lost and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. And number three is the one that, um, they really loosened up the restrictions on and it's, it's gonna be real key for us. So the current status on the final rule, as Bill mentioned, it was issued just about a week ago. It's effective April 1, 2022. However, if you spend funds prior to that or have spent funds prior to that and they're in compliance with the final rule, then the feds are okay with that. Uh, you have quite a bit of time to spend this money. They must be obligated, um, basically three years from now and they must be spent with, you know, basically four years from now, so, um, or two, two more years after that, December 31st, 2026. But the final rule does make pretty significant changes from the interim rule. It broadens the use of funds across all the categories, it simplifies reporting, and it clarifies areas that people had had questions on. But the, the biggest one, as I said, is number three, which is revenue loss. And it's, allows to provide governmental services to the extent of revenue loss. They used to make you go through a complex calculation to determine what that was. And for a lot of communities, especially smaller townships and cities, it didn't amount to much. But they, in the new rule, established a flat $10 million standard allowance that can be used for government services. So what that means for Manistee is, any community is assumed to have a $10 million revenue loss and they base that on a formula. So I, I sat through a webinar earlier today. I think there's, um, 1,700 local units in government that will be able to qualify under this and there's only like 20 or 25 that are above the $10 million threshold. And what they said in this final rule about that $10 million standard is that, it allows recipients to select between a standard amount of revenue loss or complete the full revenue loss calculation. Well, in our case, we're gonna take the standard allowance. Um, and that award, and it says in many cases, their full award, which is true, uh, can be used for government services with streamlined reporting requirements. So what do they mean by government services? Um, they define that as generally, services traditionally provided by governments are government services unless treasury has stated otherwise. So in the court, in the case of the city, that's anything that we're doing right now. Roads, water, sewer, parks, economic development, any government services that the city of Manistee can provide, police, fire, EMS, we can spend this money on. You know, they give some examples about construction of roads and other infrastructure, provision of public safety and other services, health and education services, which we don't really provide. We provide EMS, but we don't, we're not like the county who has a health department. Um, and again, they're subject to streamlined reporting and compliance requirements. You can buy fire trucks with this money, you can renovate buildings with this money, you can do all kinds of things with it because of this one change. Um, this, sure.
Can we put any of that money like into a, a land bank, like a community land bank, to purchase property and do developments?
Um, it, it really depends on how that's structured, but I think generally, the answer is yes. If it's, if, if you can legally spend that money under existing state statute with, with the exceptions that I'm gonna go through and the feds are saying you can't spend it on, then we can use this money for that.
Okay.
So you think, you kind of think of it as general fund dollars. Um, so they give some examples, and again, this isn't out of the 400 pages, this was one of their summary documents, but they talk about, uh, that government services generally include any service traditionally provided by government unless treasury has stated otherwise. So they give examples of, uh, schools and hospitals, roads and other infrastructure, government administration, staff and administrative facilities, uh, police, fire, other public services, including purchase of trucks, you can use capital, use it for capital expenditures. Um, and the restrictions on it are pretty minimal. Uh, for states, which doesn't apply to us, they can't use it to offset, um, tax revenue that resulted from lowering taxes. That one, I think, is being challenged. But regardless, for the rest of us, including the cities, that basically you can't use it to fund pension obligations. So you can't make a lump sum into our pension fund to help pay down unfunded liabilities. You can use it if you were just, like, say, you hired another police officer with these funds, you could use it to make their normal pension payments. Um, and then you can't use it for debt service, replenishing a rainy day fund or financial reserves, they don't want you to spend it, or satisfaction of a settlement or judgment. You can't use it for anything that would undermine COVID-19 mitigation, which makes sense. And, uh, you can't use funds if it would violate conflict of interest requirements. So the takeaway here is by giving us that $10 million allowance and saying it can be used for traditional government services, it opens up a whole wide variety of things that the city can spend this money on. And just finally, I'll leave you with, I mean, the current budget, we had included three proposed uses and this was adopted by council. We haven't spent any of the money yet for this, but they, um, it was approved for a 20,000 per year for three years for Housing North, the Fund of Housing Coordinator position. And I think they're pretty close to getting enough funding to, to do that. Um, we had proposed 20,000 additional money for three years for the Chamber to help, um, improve economic development. Uh, and we had improved 30,000 just in this year for blight demolition. Both of those first two, um, I believe would require some kind of an agreement with Housing North and an additional agreement with the Chamber, and that would have to come in front of council to clearly define what that money would be spent for. So assuming all that money is spent, that's 150,000 that's been committed over the three-to-five-year period and about 500,000, 490 remaining. Um, kind of a process was, one, we'd want to confirm those past commitments uh, so we knew how much money would be available for other things, and develop funding agreements. And then determine the use of the remaining funds as part of the upcoming budget process since we're just about ready to kick that off. And that would include input from council, administration, and the public. We need to prioritize projects and funding. And then also, I think this is really critical, we need to understand that there's probably gonna be additional infrastructure money coming our way because a big portion of this, um, law is going to the states for infrastructure. Plus, they passed a big infrastructure bill that's gonna have even more money coming to the states and some of that's gonna trickle down to us. And we have no idea what that's gonna look like yet. So the only reason I bring that up is, um, it might be tempting to say, hey, let's spend, you know, half that, $250,000 on doing some streets when there may be additional street money that's coming, but we don't, we just won't know that yet. But there, everything that I've seen, um, through webinars and some of the educational stuff has said, yeah, because you've got some time to spend this, you might want to wait and see if you're gonna get some other infrastructure dollars. So that's all I really have, I just wanted to bring council up to date on that. But it's really, really, really good news for almost every community in the state of Michigan.
Mr. Bradford, on, on the, using the standard, uh, to come up with the, uh, amount that we can use for your general fund purposes, what amount of the total is that? Is it all of it?
Yeah, we can, so because they gave us a flat $10 million allowance or up to $10 million and we're only getting 690.
So we can, there's no, we don't have to worry about meeting any of those other criteria?
None of those other criteria apply, we can use it for whatever government services we want.
And then it, it looked like in the packet that there's really no reporting VAC to.
Very, very little, but they consider us to be just small fish in a big sea. They want to, you know, Wayne County, they're gonna fail reports on, but we're city of Manistee up in northwest Michigan, so not so much. And, and then the other thing to keep in mind is the county's gonna have the exact same advantages now.
With bigger.
With, and they have 4.2 million or something, so, um, yeah, it's a big deal.
Can we.
Some of that money towards the fire truck, go ahead?
Uh, any, anything that we can legally spend money on. Any, anything that we can legally spend money on, we can spend this money on, with those exceptions. So the question is going to be, how does that get prioritized, what's, what makes sense? Does it need to be spread around, should we put it on ones? And so that's why, in talking with Bill, I think the best suggestion is to just work through that process as part of this budget, and get some public input on it, and see what makes sense. And, you know, I suspect you'll, we'll come up with maybe six or seven things that we want to fund with this, just to, that would make sense to be able to give a meaningful amount of money. But maybe, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, it just depends on what council wants to do and what seems to bubble to the top in the discussion.
Can we use some of this money for the school traffic issues?
You can, I mean, it's traffic safety, that's all, all stuff that's eligible. You could use it on Riverwalk, you could use it on parks, you can use it on, you know, putting a new roof on something, it, really, it's pretty wild.
Well, we can't pay bond debt, whatever.
Can't pay bond debt, can't make lump sums to the pension fund, you know, there's very, there's a few of those things that are no-no's.
Makes sense. But even that is kind of, because if I'm, if I'm spending money that I would have normally budgeted, and I'm using this money, then at the end of the year, you're surplus.
Funds are fine.
So it's, it's kind of smoke and mirrors when you're talking.
If you wanted to go down that path, yep. But I think this is an opportunity to maybe address some areas that we haven't been able to maybe get to or get to as fast as we'd like. But, you know, it'll have to be a conversation, I guess, as to where it went. And again, we have, we have lots of time to spend that, too, so.
Thanks, Ed. So good news, we get more flexibility, and I think probably next steps, you talked about, we go through the budget process, but I think council has the information to start thinking about their wish list items, and, you know, we're going to be working with staff to identify some needs. There are many needs, like you mentioned, the fire truck and some of these other things, so I think probably leaving you with that information, and then maybe we come back and talk about it in a future study session or through the budget process would be the next step.
Anybody else have anything? There's other on this stuff. Anything under other?
Can you just, I had a question with the bridge. I was down on River Street, and I noticed there was two cars that went the wrong way down River Street. Did we have any issue?
I suppose we had that problem, I hope the detour, too.
Yeah, I was going to say.
But I can, I can talk to them, maybe we get some more signs. Heard somebody turn the wrong way down Memorial off of 31, that that's the go-around, and they've made a left, we're not supposed to make a left. There's a big sign that says, you know, no, you're not supposed to turn there, but I could-
Been like put one-way by Maple there or something?
Yeah, maybe it could be over by-
Within a half hour, I saw two cars, and that was like at 7 o'clock at night, so.
Okay, I'll let them know about that, and I'm also going to make it where the Memorial thing, so maybe it's just more signs, I guess, we just keep hammering them a sign.
Are they going to take down that Christmas tree? I've seen cars plow into that snowbank, now we see they plowed around the trees, are they going to take that down?
I have no idea, I can get you an answer on that.
Well, right, but I don't know.
Well, they do have a question, I can get an answer by tomorrow, so, on that.
We can make sure patrol officers monitor that area, River Street and the issues, we were notified Saturday with the detour, so we'll monitor that. I see that more often in the summertime, but the detour makes sense, so.
Any other others?
Nope.
I'll take a motion.
Motion.